We'd like to call to order, today's Thursday, August 28th at 7:10 PM. Our invocation tonight will be by Jason Tannen.
Please stand by our hands. We thank you for today, we thank the Lord for all the blessings that she gave us each and every day of our life. We thank the Lord for the living country, that we can come here and we can pray in freedom, that we can conduct business without disturbance. We just thank you for the freedom that you provided us, and we truly believe it is a blessing. We thank you, Lord, for our men and women across the world that serve in the military, as well as our local law enforcement and firefighters and others that protect the community in time of need and in time that are needed to call upon them to help others. We thank you for their service. We ask God that you provide this guidance tonight as this council makes decisions for the future. We pray that they would also turn to you when they need counsel and guidance as to how they need to make decisions. We thank you, Lord, for the freedom. We also pray, God, that you send rain, because we need rain very badly. And we know that you're in control, and you'll send that in due time. We ask you, saying in your name.
Okay, we have established a forum, Councilman Miller, Councilman Morales, Councilwoman Castillo, Councilman Guerrero, and Councilman Delius. Now, everyone, please stand for the U.S. Department of Law and Order, Texas Department of Public Safety.
The citizens of the United States of America, and to recall that we are states, one nation, under God, in the great world with liberty and justice for all.
I am a citizen of the United States of America, a citizen of the United States of America, a citizen of the United States of America, one nation, under God, in the great world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to contain citizens' comments, if anybody has a comment. Okay, now, we're going to go on to our public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing, the time is 7:15. Mr. Miller, would you like to start?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments about the budget. For the last several days, this council, city staff, have met and worked hard. I know there's been a lot of stuff in the newspaper about potential tax rates. The proposed budget, as it sits today, is a tax rate of .3233 per hundred dollars of appraised value. This is roughly a $3.6 million budget as relates to the general fund. The other pieces that were posted on the webpage are just minorly adjusted. I am certain that after the numbers get entered into the budget after this last workshop that just got finished, it'll be posted on the city's webpage. This tax rate is a half-cent tax increase. What we were able to accomplish in this budget are some significant pieces, despite what you may have read in the newspaper. The budget that is online was missing some things that we thought needed to be there, particularly as related to the city's insolvency plan. There's a little over $20,000 that wasn't in there that goes to deficit reduction. There was some $70,000, $80,000 that wasn't in there as it related to required reserve funds. There wasn't any police cars, there wasn't any merit raises for our employees. What we were able to do is look at all the cost savings, all of the options that are available to us. We saw about a $45,000 savings in insurance by changing the benefit plan from a 100% plan to an 80-20 plan. We did not, in this budget, allot for a part-time event center coordinator. We did, in this budget, allot for taking the part-time clerk in the municipal courts to a full-time position. This is a requirement that was cited as a negative finding in the city's last two audits in not having somebody there to collect fines in the court, other than the judge. This eliminates that issue, it provides somebody in that municipal court to do that. What it does also do is not fill any of the other vacant positions in the city. We are doing the deficit reduction, we are doing reserve fund allocation, we are buying one police car. This is on a three-year lease to the city. And we, in this budget, allocated $65,000 for merit raises to city employees that are not covered by collective bargaining, based on their appraisals by their supervisors. I believe this is a good budget for the city of Florisville. It's a tight budget, it's based on some flat projections. By flat projections, it projects the same amount of revenue from sales tax as we got this year. It projects no increase. It assumes flat fees, it assumes flat fine collections from the municipal court. So if there is, if the economy froze today, this budget is a good budget. The economy continues to grow because of the Eagle Ford. If we continue to see the increase in sales tax and hotel motel taxes that the city is seeing, there will be extra revenue in this budget to put more money into reserves and to maybe fill some of these vacant positions that are not being filled in this budget. Some of the positions that are desperately needed, in our parks and recreation department and our streets department. This budget also, as a result of the rate increases that our customers saw in utility rates, addresses many of the immediate urgent water and sewer infrastructure challenges that we have. We've gone through, it doesn't fix them all, but it was those that are immediate that causes health and safety issues, that addresses many of those issues. We will be reevaluating the water and sewer rates. Again, this year, we're going to be looking at the major infrastructure needs of the city when it comes to water and sewer. But this budget, as a result of that fee increase, is able to fix some of those things. We're able to do this without a major tax increase in the city. And I believe it is this council's commitment to do that. I also know that the newspaper has talked about 46% increases and, you know, six Tahoe's, three police officers, and a number of issues. I felt it important before we opened this public hearing to let you know that this council collectively supports this budget. I believe that the city staff supports this budget. We've gone through budget workshops, several before this week, but Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of this week, I think we've done maybe a total of nine hours going over this budget, looking at the options, getting reports from city staff, and as a result, have a good budget that the entire council agrees upon. It may not be everything we want, but I think it is the best budget for the city today. I'm going to stop here, Madam Mayor, and allow any public comment for this hearing.
Okay, please tell them.
Yes, I have two questions. The $65,000 allowed for merit raises for those that are not covered by collective bargaining, how many employees does that include? And does the city have a cap on the percentage that you can receive as a raise?
What we did on this, I believe we're talking, Laura, what's the total number of employees on that?
It's actually just the general ones, that's approximately 43.
Forty-three employees, I think. Is, the original number presented to the council for merit raises was approximately $83,000. And that $83,000 was reflective of a 3% to 5% merit raise. We reduced that number from $83,000 to $65,000, so it is now reflective of a 1% to 3% merit raise, based on the previous appraisal by their supervisor.
And that is great, because that's in keeping with the private sector. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, then I'm going to be closing this public hearing at 7:22. And on to the second one. I'm opening up the second open hearing, its time is 7:22. This will be on the 2013 proposed tax rate.
Again, we, as a result of this budget, this is a tax rate of .3233 cents per hundred dollars of appraised value. That is a one-half cent increase over the previous tax rate. I believe the number is for the homeowner with an average price of a hundred, appraised value of $100,000, this will be an increase of $5.
Any comments on that?
Yes.
Ms. Fagans?
I had a lot of comments to make tonight, based on what was proposed at the last meeting. Am I understanding correctly, this .3233 is firm?
It will be voted on on the 12th, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, but we, as a council, when we were crunching these numbers, said, how do we get to that .3233? We may have some minor changes, but I don't believe we're going to see any change to the tax rate. We may have to adjust a couple dollars in here as some of the final numbers come in. Like, we just got our insurance quote today, and there's a couple other little tiny pieces that may affect this. But I think we're pretty solid on that.
Right, because, again, as you know, when I disagree with something, I get a little bit strong, and I don't want to have to do that when I know we have to do it. And so, what I was going to end up with, bottom line, was the .3233. So if that's firm, and I can go with that, then thank you very much, and there you go.
You can sleep tonight, Chris.
I always sleep.
Thank you, does anyone else have any comments?
Don't forget to add the pressure.
You got me there.
A lot of medication to be issued out without the pressure. Okay, nearby, and I close this hearing at 7:24. And we're going to go on, we're going to have the first little presentation.
Now, this is not for discussion or decision by the council, this is more of a reporting. A couple of meetings ago, we made the decision to engage a firm for the recruitment of the city manager. And we went into executive session and worked out the contractual terms of that. And one of the terms of that appointed a committee of the mayor and myself to look at applications for the city manager. And I want to report to the council and the citizens of our community where we're at on that. The firm had over 360 inquiries on the job for city manager of the city of Florisville. In their initial review of those 360-plus, they came up with approximately 89 qualified applicants. Of those 89 qualified applicants, this firm interviewed every one of them by reviewing their applications, sending them a questionnaire, and performing a telephone interview. They then selected the top 11. They presented a list to the committee, it was a blind list. By that, we didn't know who the person was or where they were from, but it was just a summary of their qualifications. The mayor and I selected the top five. The interesting piece in this, or we selected five, I don't know if we would say they were the top five, we did this independently, and we both agreed on the same first four. And selected a fifth. Today, we actually, on Monday, we were presented with detailed packages on each of these candidates that covered resumes, experiences, et cetera. And today, we conducted Skype interviews of all form. Some of them were with video, some of them were without. And clearly came up to a top three. We both agreed unanimously on the top three, there was no discussion or debate. Before I go on, I want to share one of the comments that the mayor made coming in, and the value of these factors, is, is in looking at the resumes, she came in, she says, I don't like any of them. And we discussed questions about each of them, and our rankings of those, based on their resumes. And after talking with these people and asking them specific questions, our rankings and opinions were entirely different. This was a very valuable step for us. The next step on the interview process will be next Thursday, or tentatively next Thursday. Hopefully, we'll get this process given ironed out. We have a city council meeting scheduled next Thursday. We're going to bring these candidates in, the committee will conduct interviews, about 45 minutes of each candidate. At the city council meeting, we will go into executive session, and each candidate will be, provide the city council with a five-minute presentation on why we should hire them as our city manager, given the challenges that this city faces. Each council member will be allowed to ask two questions of the candidate. And then we will repeat that process with all three candidates. Then the committee will give a report to the council based upon the Skype interviews today and the 45-minute interviews that occurred prior to the city council meeting. Hopefully, at that point, a clear candidate will be advised, be available, or be selected. If not, we'll go back to the interview process. If we have a clear candidate, we will get with our legal counsel and with our HR firm to develop the appropriate verbiage for the job offer. I believe that we have three very strong candidates for this position. Educated, qualified, and capable for the position. I've been asked not to go into any more detail on it. We will be working on a press release that gives us some more information on that. We'll be getting with legal and the HR firm to do that, and we will be getting more information to the individual council members about that, that this isn't formed to get it out. But I think we have a great opportunity ahead of us, and it's really ambitious people, and I'm excited about it. Madam Mayor, do you want to say anything about today?
Yeah, I'll just go back and say exactly what you said, that my comment was, after reviewing them, that I didn't like getting them. But it just goes to say that what's in writing is not always the right thing. When you start talking to them, we both had separate questions to ask them, and they answered very well. I was very impressed, my attitude of it was totally changed. And more shocking was that him and I agreed.
Hallelujah!
And then I was writing my questions down, and he was asking first, and I'm going to read my questions. He had the same questions that I had, and then, you know, they answered very, very well. So it was real close, and I think the council will be impressed in this selection, and they'll be able to make a very good decision, that's best for us all. Now, we're going to go on to 2A, consideration in action to ratify emergency expenditures for the Public Utilities Department to comply with TCEQ regulatory requirements for the continuous and adequate delivery of water and sewer services in an amount to be presented in this open meeting of the city council, estimated not to exceed $30,000, discussed at the August 22nd, 2013 budget workshop.
Madam Mayor, this is an issue that comes back to the second budget amendment. And I understand, because of some comments that were made in council's pass, requiring the exact dollar figures to come back to council for approval, we realized at the August 22nd, 2013 budget meeting that these were dollars that were approved for some emergency expenditures. And Mr. Bobby Entus asked if some of these things could start right away, because they were an immediate threat. And based on council's advice, we said, please, this has already been done, we've already approved this, let's fix the issues with the lift station and just formally approve those expenditures at the next city council meeting. Ms. Fagans, do we have any exact figures on this to say, to approve? Or do we just need to formally approve this as it was presented in the...
Yeah, just the wording that had on the agenda, you know, that allows to move forward on the items progress.
Okay, well, then as such, I make the motion to rati... Okay, then as such, I make the motion to ratify emergency expenditures for Public Utilities Department to comply with TCEQ regulatory requirements for the continuous and adequate delivery of water sewer services in an amount to be presented in this open meeting of the city council, estimated not to exceed $30,000.
Can I have a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Delius, all in favor.
All right.
All opposed, motion carries, bye, see you guys. Now, we're going to go on to item 2B, consideration in action to amend and accord development agreement and ratify the oral understanding between FEDC and the city of Florisville that the levigators are being paid by FEDC. Mr. Miller?
Again, I think this may be a simple issue in talking with, in talking with legal counsel today, but for, this is based upon an article published in the Wilson County News, and some issues that have been brought up before about surprises. And I don't want to beat this to death or blame anybody, Mr. Cowley, but the issue was over $60,000 in materials as it related to construction of the road at the new McCoys. And the way the newspaper article reported this, that the agreement didn't clearly say who was going to spend those dollars, whether it was going to be the city or the FEDC, and that the former city manager presented a bill for $60,000 to the EDC. Is that incorrect?
No, can I just, can I give you just a little bit of history of how this came about? First of all, there was a free-party agreement for the McCoys Development Project. And that was between the city of Florisville, McCoys, and the FEDC. The FEDC had certain commitments, which was the boring under the highway. And it stated in the contract, and Ram has the contract we can refer to tonight, it stated that we would pay no more than $125,000 for the boring. The boring was done to the satisfaction of your engineer, that is completed. We're still waiting on the billing for that boring, because it's very possible that it's less than $125,000. But the contract did state the FEDC's obligation was no more than $145,000. That's what we had budgeted. So then, so everything's going well there, and we're very, very happy, and very nice community. In July, Andy Johnson brought us several bills for roadblocks. And Mr. Ramirez, you know, speak up if you need to about that conversation. He brought the bills to the roadblocks and saying you need to pay them. And Mr. Ramirez said, well, why? Because that's for the street that's out there for courts. And it states in the contract that the FEDC was obligated to do the street. It says the city of Florisville is obligated to do the street. So by that contract, we have no obligation to pay for any of these materials. So we had a joint meeting, okay, and then you've got to realize, too, that this is happening a few weeks before grand opening. They need a street. And literally, was it the day before or two days before the opening? The day before. Mr. Ramirez has to go out there, because there was a conflict between where the street ended. There was an understanding that the street would go all the way to 181, but the city's understanding was that it was stopped, and that the company they hired to do the decelerating would extend that. So what Mr. Ramirez did is went out and worked with the contractors and get that extended to the highway, because the contractor said, look, we're opening this place Monday, we've got to get the street completed. So that all moves forward, but yet we're still, we have outstanding bills that need to be paid for construction of that street. So we had a joint meeting between myself, Andy Banks, Ram Ramirez, and Sherri Polling was also at the meeting about solutions for this, because we really didn't have an obligation to pay for any of this stuff. And so, we talked about three options, number one, that is to do nothing. Number two was the possibility of creating an interlocal agreement, getting this done the right way, approving an expenditure up to a certain amount, and then maybe tacking that on to what we would call in-kind services. Let's say that if the FEDC needs a water project done at one of the properties, possibly tacking that on as in-kind services, that you would provide that service to the EDC to maybe install that line and pay for the materials. Or the third option was to do a cost sharing. Well, at our August 12th meeting, there was a lot of debate about, should we do this? The general feeling was, I don't know that we should do this. I mean, really, for the most part, I was really standing up and saying that, you know, this accommodation that you had, and you've got to be careful about entering into a contract, and you can't actually take care of that obligation. That was my stance as the treasurer of the EDC. Mr. Ray Lambert made some comments, and were very good comments. He said, you know what, this is the city of Florisville, and this is what the EDC needs to do and help improve the community. So he made some really good comments about, you know, we don't want to go bills. We don't want to see bills go unpaid, and I don't know that they would go unpaid, but it's something that the group then, that night voted on, to prove up to $60,000. And Ram, do you recall exactly how the motion went, or do you have the motion here or not?
No, but...
It was to prove the $60,000. $60,000, and then we also agreed to do the in-kind, is that right?
Yes, the in-kind.
Tack on or utilize that as in-kind work back to the FEDC. Well, in order to do that, you know, the city council would have to approve, that's what they want to do. I was asked to come last week, and then, of course, that didn't work out because of the executive section. My question to you would be, what, what do you need us here for tonight, and what do you want us to accomplish?
Well, I don't think I want to accomplish anything tonight from this perspective, okay? I read the article, and I appreciate the information. What I have concern about is that we enter into these agreements, and as you talked about in our budget workshop, and the treasurer of the EDC, a lot of surprises come up. I believe we need to be a transparent government, I mean, believe that if we said, the city of Florisville, be it the city manager or somebody else, that we were going to do this, whether it's in the agreement or not, we're going to pay. Suck it up and pay. If another agency said they were going to do it, in this case, the FEDC, said they were going to do it, whether it's in the agreement or not, suck it up and pay the bill. I remember, as did our counselor, the discussion that occurred in the city council. It wasn't in the midst. So what I would like to do is task our city staff to go back to these meeting minutes, okay? If necessary, pull the tapes, and if the city said we were going to pay for it, pay for it. If the FEDC said they were going to pay for it, pay for it. Now, if we come out of that with no conclusive pieces, then, yeah, we need to pay the bill, we need to get the in-kind piece. But I am sick and tired of it as a councilman, as I'm sure you are as a treasurer of these surprises of, well, so-and-so said they were going to do this, or so-and-so said they were going to do this. If we said in an open meeting that we're going to do it, then we need to pay the bill. If we didn't say that, then we need to go down another road. My direction by bringing this up is to go back to what did the meet, what occurred in the meeting and what was said. And then, let's do that. And that would be my guidance to city staff, or my recommendation to city staff. I don't know what the council thinks of this, but when we have articles in the newspaper that say the city surprised the FEDC with the $60,000 bill, and I'm just finding out about it for the first time by reading the article, I'm concerned.
Well, the city manager was brought into this immediately, and we had that meeting. So if that was not communicated to the council, then that's a fault of the manager. But this has already been researched by the staff. But this has already been researched by the staff. And the video at the FEDC meeting, it was brought up at the meeting about paying for a street. But it was never brought back on the agenda again to incorporate the street. And so that occurred, I think, in August of two thousand and twelve.
It occurred in this council. I don't remember the conversation. I don't remember the exact words. And my recollection to it was that the city manager stood up in the city council meeting and said the city was going to do the road. Alls I want to do is go back to what was said in this council meeting.
You know, I don't-
Counselor?
I don't know that matters. Well, I don't know that matters what was said because the agreement was signed in November, and it clearly states there's no obligation to FEDC. But it doesn't matter what was said in the meeting on there. What's that?
It doesn't address the issue of the road material law, correct? It's not part of the FEDC's obligations. It's part of the-
It's the city's obligation. And so the cities, the agreement was signed after that. So what we did as an FEDC was we went ahead and proved that we would spend the money up to a certain threshold. And if the city says, you know what, that's not right, we're not going to do that, then that's what we are doing.
Well, and that's my position on this. If the city said, we're going to pay the sixty thousand dollars for the road, or we're obligated to the road, then we need to pay the bill. And we don't need to be shuffling the paperwork on this one name. And that's what comes out of this, you know? Counselor, you're saying, yes, that's the case. Is that what I'm hearing?
That is what is in the contract, and there is the common term, I believe it's item four in the contract, that says, this is the entire agreement. Everything is written in the entire standard contract language that does tend to preclude, even if there was an oral agreement, once it's filled out on paper and everybody's had a chance to review and sign it, that's what's in there. And so that's what is on there. There are statements that were made at the FEDC meeting, August twenty-one, twenty-twelve, that said, we'll pay for the period if you guys provide the labor.
And I was around you to what's the board of-
Well, then we just need to make sure that we're doing our contracts to the way things are being said. But I'm upset at the fact that the city and the FEDC are having this discussion. And I appreciate everything the FEDC board is doing. But if we're going to be an open and transparent government, we're going to do what we've got to say to do, you know? And is this a consideration in action item?
Yes.
Okay. Based on this, based on what you're saying to us, I'm going to make the motion that the city pay the sixty thousand dollars for the materials to the Economic Development Corporation, as was, as per the requirement of the agreement.
The city may argue that it's to ratify an amendment to the, to the contract, which would be in line with what Mr. Cowley presented.
I'm uncomfortable dealing with that.
So we can agree to make a motion to approve that or to deny that. That would be the motion on there.
And Chris, would a verbal agreement not be overruled because of the contract? Because there was a meeting, I believe, that the previous director didn't state that they would pay the labor, that they would pay the materials and we would do the labor.
Right. And we do have where people have said that, either in open meetings of city council or the FEDC. What we have to discuss, obviously, with the FEDC's counsel, is interpretation of the contract and what the standard, what we call grabbing at the four corners of the contract and putting everything that's in there on paper, that's dividing the agreement. So if we want, it could be tabled, and we could talk about when Mr. Burcher is your counsel. We could do that, or it could be approved to accept what Mr. Cowley presented, or it could be denied. That's all the options for the next one.
Well, I'm just saying that none of the materials have been paid for yet.
Yes, the city's paid the materials.
Oh, they have.
The city is paying, but we bought the materials. What was being-
Basically wanting to be reversed.
Well, I wasn't aware of that because we still have some type of invoices that-
Yeah.
Those are generated.
Oh, that you're wanting to reverse the materials.
Yes, the city is paying.
Okay, well, our concern was-
So there's nothing really outstanding from the city?
We want to make sure they get paid. You don't want to pre-.
Well, they're trying to amend the agreement. FEDC can reverse the city's one. Is that what I understand?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I make the motion to deny the amendment.
Okay, now, I'm going to make a recommendation because I see this happening a lot, is that the city does do a lot to help FEDC by purchasing the materials at our cost so that it's cheaper for y'all because we work together, okay? Secondly, I'm going to recommend that any future work that we do be in writing because this is your safe thing. This is going to keep getting us in trouble.
This new board in office right now will not have any work done.
Which is excellent.
And if, in fact, it is done, you need to be deducting, if there's any in-kind work done, you need to be deducting it off like you actually had the work done for certain values. That way it just gets done and it's over.
Do we owe you any in, do we owe FEDC any in-kind at this point? Or is it like starting from scratch?
Well, that's a good question. At this point, probably not because it had to do with the community center. And what Laura has pieced together is, I think, is probably a wash, you know? So, but the thing is, and we would agree with that, that there's been too many things done. The business done, you can't track all this stuff. If we do it, we have to have it in writing, and legally, I think that's required by law.
That's what I understand by law of them. And denying this, this amendment to the agreement, okay, is saying that, from my position, regardless of what the contract says or the agreement says, it was said that the city was going to do this, okay? Whether it didn't get in writing or not, okay? Well, now the people are gone and the pieces are lost, and we're coming back to, well, here's the agreement, okay? I'm uncomfortable. I don't like that. And if the city manager or city staff got up there and said, we're going to pay for the materials, and that's what I'm hearing has happened, then that's what the city's going to do, okay? And I agree with the mayor.
It's actually the opposite. The city manager had worked with the FEDC, and the FEDC had said they would pay for the materials. And that's what the city manager had said.
In the meeting?
Correct.
That's what the tape says in the meeting?
Correct.
And whoever reviewed the contract made the mistake of not catching where it said on there that the city was going to pay.
And that's where we're unsure if it was ever actually formally agreed to. There's no motions that state this is what we're going to agree to and this is what we're not. It's all done on the tapes of the meetings.
Okay, so the tapes say that the city was going to provide the labor, the FEDC was going to provide the materials.
What is it, what's that cost?
Well, I respect the fact that the agreement doesn't say that. What I'm looking for is what was said in the council meeting, because I sat here and remember the discussion.
It was that city crews would provide the labor and that the FEDC would provide the period. But again, there was no motion for that to be made. There was never any formalized agreement as it was stated in open meetings.
Then it falls on the city for not making sure that that was in the agreement.
Correct.
Okay, then I stand up my motion to deny that.
What's your recommendation, Counselor, or the advice you give us?
That's up to the city and how you all want to react to it. If the FEDC's willing to pay the sixty thousand to reverse the city and take in fine, that's one decision. Or since the city's already paid, it does create a budget hole, but that's up to the city.
And at this point, there is no funds allocated to this project, correct?
No.
It would have to come out of-
The general fund.
I know the general fund somewhere.
Did I hear Laura say all the yields did not come in yet?
We had a few come in last week, so we have not filled everything out to the county, but-
No, but how much is outstanding? How?
I don't have to say. If they come in as they bring loads and the numbers and the bills, so.
So is that going to put us more in a hole of what we're doing?
It was an unbudgeted item.
Sixty-seven thousand dollars.
The point is that we've got to do things by the contract. And if we're not doing them by contract, as the mayor said.
Yeah, we're the contractors.
Yeah. If you have easy as a rail, maybe just the mayor.
We must do that that way. We've got to stop these verbal agreements to do this and do that. We've got to do this. And if the city said we're going to do this in the contract, then that's what we're going to do. If it creates a sixty-seven thousand dollar deficit, well, guess what? Don't do it again. Make sure the contract's right. But I don't see this group, the FEDC, as having to eat this, okay, because of our mistake.
My only concern is just putting us more in a hole and I don't know what we can keep left and say. What is that going to do to the rest of us? What do you, what do you all think of doing?
I just, I just don't remember, because of course it's going to walk back, but I just don't remember us saying that we were going to pay for the materials and we were just going to do the labor.
That's the way the city's always worked.
A good person to talk to, I think, would be the speaker right there. He would know what he was told to do.
And I understand that, but once again, those discussions were prior to the contract being approved and written. So at one point in time, the contract was brought before the council, it was approved. And so as far as to go back now and argue what was said, who said what, because the contract was approved. Now, we had this same discussion in our EDC meeting. And we've already agreed that we would consider booing what we just said we would do. But, you know, I was asked to come here to discuss this item and make sure everybody understood what was talked about.
So on the last, what do you put general, what do you put general on?
Well, we're prepared to pay if we need to. We've already been having a discussion in our August twelfth meeting.
Since you already voted to pay.
We voted to do it. But what we do need to have is, in our motion, was to have an interlocal agreement drawn up properly, like it should be, to do it.
Starting with the whip mayor, the whip mayor. John, you got work there.
Oh, I think I would venture to say that, that I think it would only be fair because it was a fault that both parties, that the city and FEDC shared the cost.
Say again, Chris?
I could venture to say that, that because it was a failure on both the FEDC as well as the city's part, that they should share the cost, that the costs should be shared, split right on the motion.
Who's fault would it be that the contract itself was written?
Well, I think it was a, it was not that it wasn't written right. I think it just wasn't followed through properly.
The contract didn't follow through. The contract's very clear.
Yeah, but followed through and manipulated or changed with verbal, you know, to, you know, changed from written to verbal and, you know, there's, there was, you know, obviously conflicts in the middle there.
Counselor, because the agenda item is written as such to either approve or deny this amendment to the existing agreement that the FEDC has proposed. What Councilman Rodriguez has suggested we couldn't do, that would be an alteration of that amendment to the agreement.
Well, you could. It would be to ratify the law agreement. And since this wouldn't be what falls under the, we're going to pay for materials, if you're going to pay for labor, it would have to be tabled at that point, and then it would be reworked up to a separate arrangement.
Okay. I'm going to withdraw my motion to deny, Madam Mayor, a motion to table this for further discussion between the FEDC and this coun, and council to, that we can come to an agreement on how we want to deal with this. Maybe what they have proposed is the best way. I am just uncomfortable, and this being a one-sided discussion as it was reported in the Wilson County News, and that being the first time this council was made aware of the issue of the problem with the agreement or the discrepancy in the money. So my motion is to table.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Little, please, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Will you carry this? Fine, see you.
Thank you.
Okay, that will be it. The meeting is adjourned at seven fifteen.